Good evening, everyone. My name is Charlie Baraboo. I'm the Vice Mayor of the City of Virginia. I'm going to call this meeting to order on February 9 at 5:30 p.m. Our mayor is out of town tonight. He had to do an unfortunate thing, go to a funeral. So I'm taking his place tonight for the meeting. So if I mess up, Britt's going to correct me, right, Britt? Okay. First thing I've ordered is a roll call. Pam?
Baraboo.
Present.
Friedleb.
Present.
Paulson.
Present.
Beyondich.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Barnes Zelli.
Here.
Okay, all are present except the mayor. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Public Forum. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak at the Public Forum at this point in time? There's a five-minute limit, but I see no one in the audience would like to speak, so we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. This motion will be to approve the consent agenda as listed. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councillor or a citizen of the City of Virginia requests that that item be considered separately. 5.1, Approval and Correction of the Minutes of Regular Meeting Held January 26, 2021, and the Special Meeting Held February 2, 2021. Item 5.2, Adoption of Finance Resolution Number 2101, Schedule of Bills. 5.3, Adopt Pay Estimate 8 to Kraus Anderson for Ewens Field in the Amount of $2,678.69. Prove the Pay Estimate Number 54 of Number 8 to Kraus Anderson for the MECC in the Amount of $965,025.35. 5.5, Prove the 2021-32 Off-Sale Liquor License for IYS Ventures LLC Doing Business as I-Mart Stores 202, 8th Street, South. 5.6, Prove the 2021 Tobacco License for IYS Ventures LLC Doing Business as I-Mart Stores 202, 8th Street, South. With that, I'll entertain a motion for approval or taking items out of the Consent Agenda.
I'll move the Consent Agenda.
Moved by Councillor Johnson?
I'll support.
Supported by Councillor Friedleb. Is there any, there's no discussion unless somebody wants to bring something up? Otherwise...
Councillor Baraboo?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just noticed there's one error on 5.2. That should be Resolution 21-003.
Yeah, that's right. It should be 3, right?
Correct.
Third pay period of the year. I'm sorry, I missed that. Thank you, Pam. With that correction, is there any discussion to remove something? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying no. Motion carries, 6 to 0. Next item is Appearances. I don't see anybody listed for appearances, and I don't believe there's anybody in the audience right now for appearances. So we'll move on to item number 7, Unfinished Business. Boy, we're doing good. There's no unfinished business tonight, so that's good. Then we'll move on to number 8, Discussion Items. Planning and zoning minutes from February 1, 2021. Prove the variance, item 8, Prove the variance for Rock Ridge Public Schools at 411 5th Avenue, South. And the variance is a 14-foot variance to the required 35-foot maximum building height in order to construct a new building 49 feet high. And I believe this was approved, if I remember correctly. My planning and zoning, let me take a quick look here.
I'll move the variance.
Okay, thank you. It was moved by Councillor Johnson. Is there support? Support by Councillor Barnes Zelli. Having it was approved by planning and zoning. Is there any discussion needed on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes, motion passes, 6 to 0. Next item is 8.2, Adopt a Resolution Declaring an Official Intent Under U.S. This has to do, I believe, with Treasury Regulations. Is that correct, Sherry? Reimbursement rules for this, and this is a resolution that we need to do in order to be in compliance, I believe. Correct? Okay.
So moved.
So moved. Councillor Friedleb moved. Is there support?
All support.
Julianne, did you support? Okay, Julianne Paulson supported. Is there any further discussion on this issue? Councillor Johnson?
Clarification, what it's exactly for, it was hard to read the resolution, my building, that kind of stuff.
Okay. Britt or Sherry, can you explain a little bit better than, I'm not quite sure...
Yep, this is for the bank-qualified loan we are going to take out for the 2021 street project.
Oh, okay.
This is the reimbursing resolution that allows us to pay ourselves back for expenses that are incurred prior to the bond being taken.
So we're going to take the bond early, and then we'll deposit, and then...
We're going to have expenses before the bond issuance is done. So this helps us pay ourselves back for that expense.
Okay, okay. Now it's understandable. So that's a good thing to do for our street program. Do you understand now, Steve?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, it's been moved and supported to approve this resolution, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes, 6 to 0. Item 8.3, Adopt a Resolution to Pay LGA on Time in and of Fall to the Minnesota Cities. This is a resolution that we really want to see adopted at state or the legislations so they don't move or cut LGA or move it and make it a longer period of time for paying stuff because of cities, all cities and small cities, need to sell LGAs. So we're looking to make sure it stays the same as last year. We know there's not going to be an increase. Am I correct on that, Sherry?
Correct. It's my understanding it's not going to decrease or increase.
Okay. So we're just sending a resolution out to ensure that our city is on the same page as we were last year. Looking for a motion for this resolution?
I'll move the resolution.
Moved by Councillor Paulson. Is there support? And support by Councillor Barnes Zelli. Is there any further discussion? Councillor Johnson?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm concerned when I, I don't understand, and I brought this up before about resolutions like this, why we are telling the people who already know we want this that we want it. With that being said, is there a reason why Representative Sandsted isn't listed on here as a, as an Iron Range delegate? And I only ask that because while Senator Tomasoni is our local representative, Mr. Bach is not. And so what I would like to see, if we're going to be listing people, I would like to see Julie Sandsted listed also as, she is an advocate for things that happen in Virginia, and she is a partner to the Iron Range.
Yeah, I think what we're doing with this resolution, they're sending to the leadership, and then they'll disseminate it to all of our delegation and stuff because Tom Bach and David Tomasoni are in leadership positions, and all the rest of them are listed, they're all leadership positions. Lisa Hortman is the House Chair or the Majority Leader. Paul Gazelka is the Senate Majority Leader, and then Kurt Doudt is Minority Leader. And Susan Kent is, I believe, the Senate Minority Leader. And then you have Governor Tim Walz. So they're all people of authority. We did not list any of our representatives unless they were in leadership position. We didn't list, list Dave Lizlegard or Sandsted unless there are any of the other ones. That's the reason for, because the leadership will then disseminate this when they send it down. Does that make sense?
Dave Lizlegard is listed. He's the first name on the list, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that. No, we can add Representative Sandsted, she's out of our district, but we can add her, gather to our senators that are representatives, but we can add her to it if you'd like to. I don't see a problem with it.
I think that Julie often gets missed as a, as a supporter of Virginia as well, so I would like to see her listed.
You want to make an amendment to the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to the amendment? Carl? Okay, Carl, it was moved by Councillor Johnson to amend the resolution. I had Julie Sandsted's name to the resolution and supported by Councillor Barnes Zelli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you for bringing that up, Steve, because I missed that, so... Okay, the next item is Adopt a Resolution. I believe you had it on your desk tonight. And I'm sorry it's there, but Brian Lindsey, our attorney, just finished it up here for us. It's a resolution to approve it first, recommended by Rams. Brian, do you want to explain what changes you made, please?
Thank you. The primary changes were just a couple. Number one, I customized it so that it's specific to the city, so we're making this resolution on behalf of the council of the City of Virginia. The other items that I had changed or modified here from the original, I took out some of the language that Councillor Johnson had indicated at the previous meeting, tended to make the resolution look like it came from more of a political position. City councils are neutral bodies, but what we can speak about is we can issue resolutions that express our concern for how these types of, how this type of legislation can affect our economy and our, and our local environment. And so I tried to refocus the, well, not refocus, but I tried to emphasize that that was kind of the focus of the resolution, is the impact that we feel that it would have on the local environment, specifically within the city and our economy, but also the economy of the region. And then to also focus on the fact that, as a council, we're taking the position that the current regulations that are in place are sufficient, protect us, and as being as close to mining as any other community, we don't have a problem with what's in place right now.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Does that make sense to everybody, what he did? I'm satisfied with the resolution, as is Councillor Johnson.
Thank you. I appreciate the time and effort you put into that. I think that this does much more accurately reflect the point being that the rules are already there, and there's no reason to go through a similar process. So I will be supporting the rewritten resolution with the correction of the City of Virginia on the top line.
Okay, I guess we need a motion before we should do more discussions, so I'm looking for a motion for approval.
I would move the adoption of the resolution to oppose, approve it first, recommended by Rams.
Okay, is there a support?
Support.
Okay, it's moved by Councillor Friedleb and supported by Councillor Beyondich to adopt this resolution. Is there any further discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, 6 to nothing. Okay, that takes care of that portion of the business. Now, I had a conversation with Britt today, and she said she was okay to take the committee reports, and she'll run, run those through for us, and if she gets stuck any place or anything, because she was not here for most of that, except on, I believe you were on Zoom, weren't you?
No, I wasn't.
No, you weren't, that's right. You were out, so, okay. Go ahead, Britt, if you feel comfortable.
Yep, I can go ahead. Thank you. At the Committee of the Whole Meeting on Tuesday, February 2, at 9:00 a.m., we had an appearance by Sarah Carling and Megan Christensen regarding a presentation and request for support of a Northeast Minnesota mine tour project. It has been directed to city staff, the Community Development Planner, myself, and the Park and Recreation Director, and we are going to get together this week to look at that and come back to the Committee of the Whole next week. Their request is for $1,000 per location, and they're suggesting $3,000 for the City of Virginia. The next item on the agenda was a discussion regarding the police, repair of the police garage, which was damaged in a fire on July 2, 2020. We have, we have determined from the insurance company that they will cover the cost of the repair of the existing garage, but we had discussed previously extending the garage out to make it a little bit larger. It was moved and supported to direct the base bid from SCH for Architectural Services for the police garage back to staff to gather additional information regarding the cost of expanding along with rebuilding a current size of the police garage and bring it back to the council. And if it's amicable to the council, I'd like to bring it to the Committee of the Whole next week.
I'm sorry, Britt.
I'd like to bring it to Committee of the Whole next week.
Okay, so just no action this week?
No action this week, if that's okay with the rest of the council.
Okay, we can discuss how those bids were done, and I believe there was some misinformation at the first Committee of the Whole on those bids.
Yes, yep, and I do have further clarifying information, but I have not prepared it with, yet today, but I'll bring it with me next week.
Okay, well, that's understandable, since you have not been here with us for a while, so thank you, Britt. Is that okay with everybody, that we can wait? Okay? Well, that's just an action by staff. Okay, go ahead, Britt.
Mr. Bill Hines, our Public Works Director, stated the Phase 1 of the environmental study for the proposed public safety site has been completed, and due to the previous land uses in the area, a Phase 2 environmental study must be completed. We had accepted quotes for this, this work, and we received two bids, two quotes. It was moved and supported to approve the quote from NTS in the amount of $35,504 to perform the Phase 2 environmental study for the proposed Virginia Public Safety Facility Site.
Okay, you all have, have that, so we have a motion on the floor. I believe there's a resolution in the packet on this. So is there a motion to approve?
I will move to accept the bid.
Okay, is there a support?
Support.
Support by, or motion by Councillor Johnson, support by Councillor Beyondich. Now, is there any discussion on that? Anybody? Mr. Friedleb?
Well, yeah, now, this is something that's, you know, we've already been appropriated money for, to the tune of like $9.4 million, and there's an absolute necessity for this type of facility, without question. And I think we do have to forge ahead, but just keep in mind that, from what I understand, we were told that anything that's disturbed during the course of this boring, we would be responsible for mitigating, and that could be exceedingly costly. But, you know, I'm just, it's a cautionary note, I guess, from my standpoint, that I'm a little concerned about. I know a lot of time and effort and data was accumulated to determine that this was the best site for this proposed building, but I did have a conversation the other day with one of our constituents who's still concerned about all of the property that needs to be bought up there and raised, and the land prep that needs to be done there, and question about conversations that had been done in the past with regard to the MinDOT building and facility over on Hoover Road, and whether or not there's still consideration for utilization of that facility in the event that that's vacated in the near future, which I don't know if that's just a done deal, given that we've already gone the gamut of having lobbyists provide opportunity for us to acquire $9.4 million towards this building. But in any event, I guess I'm just bringing it up for sake of conversation, that there are people in the community that feel that we're kind of getting in up over our head with regard to this project, and where it's going to be built, and all of the acquisition of land that needs to be done, and the potential disturbing of things underneath the ground that could potentially cost millions to mitigate on top of the costs of the project itself. So I just wanted to bring that up, not to stop anything from happening, but just to keep in mind that this is not as simple as it seems, I guess, is how I'm looking at it. And I am concerned to some degree that, once we start boring, should we disturb? It could be cost prohibitive in some regards, but it remains to be seen. So in any event, I just wanted to bring that up, that it's in an area that's gonna, you know, I don't even know where I'm going with this. I'm just, it's like, there's a, what, there's 72 properties, I believe, that need to be purchased, and I know that that was included in the cost that we proposed for this project. I don't know where we are with regard to, you know, convincing people to vacate their But in any event, we might be already too, too many steps forward to take some steps back, but it just made me scratch my head and think when that person brought that up. They claimed they had worked for MinDOT, and they said that that facility would easily hush all of the needs that we have for our city police and fire and Public Works and so on, and whether or not that's true, I don't know. But it came from an informed source that was familiar with that facility. But I think we're a little bit too far down the road to even backtrack, to even discuss that, but I just had to bring it up, given that that was brought up to me over the course of the last week or so, so...
Thank you, Councillor Friedleb. There is one thing you have to remember with this, the dollars are approved of this are site-specific. That was, we had to put that in there, a site with the, and if we go back to try to rework, we're going to, we may lose out on that big $9 million, $9.4 million, I believe. The state of Minnesota has not found a new site for their facility. They had one on 135, and that proved to be too costly to develop, so they've backed off on, on selling that property. So I think we should move ahead if we find something really bad. There are a lot of gas stations on that strip beforehand, so most of it's probably going to be petrol stuff, and that would be covered under, under 90% under the petrol fund. There's one area that's backed by the old State of Refoundry that might be an issue, but a lot of that's been cleaned up by the county, and we've got clean title to that. Now, so they took care of that a couple of years ago, I believe, Britt? So that's where we're standing on that. Is there any further discussion on this? Anybody? Okay, hearing none? Do we have a motion on this already, Pam? Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries, 6 to nothing.
The next item on the agenda, it was moved and supported to accept the plans and specifications and authorize advertising for bids for the Silver Lake Trail Project.
I'll move advertising for bids for the Silver Lake Trail.
All support.
Okay, this has to do with extending it from the south shore, Silver Lake, across the lake, and then finishing the trail around the east side of the lake.
Correct.
You're looking at a bridge project across the lake there, if I recall right.
Correct. We're looking at a floating bridge that'll connect from the, approximately the Children's Memorial Park to, right south, or right north of Northern State Bank. We have, we are in the LCCMR bill that is being, that has been presented, and it looks like it is going to pass. We haven't passed it yet, but it is, it is moving forward.
Looking favorable then?
Looking favorable, yep.
Who will get maybe another?
We did receive ITRRB funding for the first portion on 6th Avenue.
Okay. So we did receive an LCCMR grant for Bailey's Lake, so this would be a completion if they, if they approve that, so...
Correct.
I think we need to move forward with this. Okay? So who moved it? Who moved that? I'm losing track here. Councillor Johnson moved, and Julianne Paulson supported. So any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? No, motion carries, 6 to nothing. Go ahead, Britt.
It was moved and supported to approve the plans and specifications and to authorize advertising for bids for the 2021 Street and Infrastructure Improvement Project, and to authorize SCH to move forward with the project as of the date of February 2, 2021.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councillor Johnson. Support?
All support.
Support by Councillor Friedleb. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The City of Virginia was notified by St. Louis County Recycling Services that the contract expired on December 31, 2020. It was moved and supported to authorize staff and the city attorney to renegotiate the St. Louis County Recycling Services contract, and to send St. Louis County a notice of intent to renegotiate while continuing to operate under the stopgap of the original contract.
Okay, so that's what we need, to have somebody do a motion, and just for an aside, we've asked them if they're going to raise fees to do it before our budget time, and they're still not doing it. And I've asked Mark St. Lawrence three times about doing this stuff ahead of time, so we will need to have a discussion when we have the contract, a discussion on this. So is it, you know, motion to move forward with staff to authorize, not authorize, but to negotiate the contract?
So moved.
Moved by Councillor Johnson. Support? Support by Councillor Barnes Zelli. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes, 6 to nothing.
It was moved and supported to approve the purchase of 50 300-gallon garbage cans and containers that include lids and hardware from Schneider Industries in the amount of
I'll move to approve.
Okay, moved by Councillor Paulson to approve. Is there support? Support by Councillor Beyondich. Any further discussion? These are just replacements that we kind of have every year where cans get broken, lids get broken. You know, cold weather like that, 30 below makes those cans get cracked pretty easy.
Nobody likes 30 below.
No, that's true. There's no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, 6 to nothing.
Brian Silver, our Park and Recreation Director, presented to the council change orders for the MECC project totaling the amount of $232,680. Brian, do you want me to continue, or do you want to go ahead? Okay. It was moved and supported to approve change order PCO 19 dash, 19.0 dash COR 14.0 for roofing ply modification, which is an increase in the amount of $1,739.52 payable to Kraus Anderson.
So moved. Support.
Okay, it's moved by Councillor Johnson, supported by Councillor Friedleb. This was just for a structural update on the cooling system on the roof, correct, Brian? Okay, that is correct. Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, 6 to nothing.
It was moved and supported to approve change order PC 026.0 COR 16.0, which is miscellaneous drawings modification for an increase of $86,014.74 for the MECC project.
This is a change order, so I'm looking for a motion on this change order?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Councillor Johnson. Support? Support by Councillor Barnes Zelli. Is there any further discussion on this? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, 6 to nothing.
It was moved and supported to approve change order PC, PCO 18.0 COR 15.0, drawing revisions for an increase of $56,872.26 for the MECC project, and I do believe this is related to Health Department required changes.
That is correct. I'm looking for a motion for that change order. We don't have much choice on this one.
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Councillor Paulson. Support? Support by Councillor Barnes Zelli. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
The next one was a good one. It's approved change order PCO 28.0 COR 17.0 trench drain credit for a decrease of $2,442.56 for the MECC project.
So moved.
Moved by Councillor Friedleb.
Support.
Support by Councillor Beyondich. I don't imagine there's any discussion on this one, when you're going to get some money back. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, 6 to nothing.
The next change order was moved and supported to approve change order POC 31.0 COR 18.0 wall panel and interior revisions for the structural pull in the main arena to have more of an aesthetic look and to add floor outlets and eye-wash stations throughout the building in the amount of $89,444.82 for the MECC project. building in the amount of $89,444.82 for the MECC project.
Okay. Hearing that, Brian, did you have anything to add to that? Okay. Looking for a motion to approve that. It's, they're going to put amenities around that structural pole in there, and I believe it includes self-pluggings too for people. Okay. So that'll be a good thing for the people to come to the events at the, at the MECC.
I'll make that motion for discussion.
Okay. Moved by Counselor Freeland. Support by Counselor Barnes Zelli. Discussion, Counselor Freeland?
I just want to make sure that the public is aware that Brian Silber and Eric Wedge provided very detailed information to us at the Committee of the Whole Meeting last week with regard to these change orders. And so we're not just off the cuff approving $89,000 here and, and $54,000 there, whatever. It's been detailed and explained to us in a way in which we're comfortable in making this. And it also fits within the contingency budget that we have available to us through the building budget for the MECC. So, just so that they know that.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Freeland. I was going to just mention what you mentioned. So I'm now looking for approval. We had a motion to, Pam? Okay. All those in favor signify, oh, discussion. I'm sorry, Julianne.
Thank you. I just, to add on to that, and I appreciate you bringing that forward. And just to add on to that, I think we have a design meeting coming up on Wednesday. Is it possible to have the spreadsheet updated as to the financial figures on that, where we're at on that contingency budget? So as we're looking forward with the FFNE, we will kind of have a baseline of where we're at. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I think, if I may interject, I think there was somewhere around 600 and some thousand left the last time we heard. So, or maybe that included these out of there. I'm not sure, Brian. It did. You're shaking your head. Yes.
Yes. After approving all of these change orders today, our contingency budget will be roughly $650,000 remaining in that budget.
But he'll still bring you the figures at your meeting. Okay, in writing. Correct, Brian? Okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Britt. No, we didn't vote yet. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, it needed to be corrected.
And the final change order was from Commercial Refrigeration, gave us some suggestions on how to make the Zamboni pits function better to provide an ease of maintenance for our staff. It was moved and supported to approve change order PCO 12.0-COR 11.0 additional scope of work for an increase of $1,051.48 for the MECC project for the Zamboni pits.
Now, this has to do with the Zamboni pits where they unload and stuff and get rid of the ice and stuff. So that's what that's for. So.
Employee safety is always a very.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's safety. You're correct. So looking for a motion for that, please.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Freeland.
Support.
Support by Counselor Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Committee of the Whole, they reviewed the city credit card policy, which was updated on May 12th, 2020, and they suggested some changes to the purchasing policy. The purchasing policy is in the packet with the updated removal of the Engineering Department.
Okay. So this is probably the first time since, or you got it on your computer, I believe. But if you want to review it some more, we can bring it back if there's any more change you want to see at the next Committee of the Whole Meeting. Is that satisfactory? Do you want to do it that way? Is that okay? Okay, we'll do that then. So that's just the next Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Bring it to the Committee of the Whole next week. The next item on the agenda was moved and approved to extend the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, or the FFCPRA, through March 2nd, 2021, to be reevaluated at the Committee of the Whole Meeting on that date.
So moved.
It's removed by Counselor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Beyondich. This has been a good thing for our employees. I was a little bit against it to start with, but I've changed my mind on this because our utilization has been very limited. So I think it's a good thing to keep our employees happy. So is there any other further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries six, nothing.
The final motion was, it was moved and supported to approve the request from the National Safety Council for annual fundraising campaign for fire prevention materials for this fire department.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson. Who supported that? Julianne. Moved by Counselor Johnson, supported by Counselor Paulson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that takes care of the main part of our agenda. Now we have item 10, Commission Liaison Reports. Do we have any Commission Liaison Reports? Okay. I see, seeing none. Brian, did you have anything? Well, we'll go to staff here. Department head reports. Any department head reports? None. Okay. And that includes you too, Brian's insurance attorney. If you had anything, you can speak there. And any council reports that we need to do other than we're on schedule, we're going to have to schedule another street and alley meeting coming up here because we had a big study done on the street lights on the main street, and they need badly repaired and res, re-sinking and replacement in some parts and new bases, et cetera. And we also have to go out for the bid, bid process here for the bonds on the street project. We have not done that yet. Correct, Britt? So we have, we'll have another street and alley and we'll inform you, Steve, what days are you available? Or we'll just talk to you. Britt will talk to you and we'll set up the dates.
Yeah, Britt knows my schedule pretty well.
Okay. Okay. And I'm available anytime. And Carl, you're on the, you're on street alley, right? Yeah, you are. So you're available to anytime. Okay. So Britt, if you want to talk to Mr. Counselor Johnson and we'll set up a date.
For that.
It'll be convenient. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. With that, is anybody on the council of anything to bring up? If not, the meeting is adjourned at, oh, man, new record, 6:07 PM. Jeez, maybe I should run these meetings all the time. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for attending, and I appreciate it very much. So everybody have a good rest of your evening.